All right, let's go ahead and get started. And I know that Councilmember Christensen will be joining us shortly, only because we spent, we were together all afternoon in a meeting and she had to go home and get some food. So, that said, let's go ahead and start the roll call.
Mayor Bagley?
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen, Finley, here, Martin, here, Ted, here, Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bagley, we have four.
All right, let's do the pledge.
(inaudible) flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one quick change to the agenda, and that is, and if the record would reflect, that Councilmember Christensen, or Mayor Protam Christensen is here. The one thing, if you guys are going to be waiting for discussion on inclusionary zoning, we're going to be pushing that from this week till next Tuesday, for a couple of reasons. So, heads up Eugene. So, if you're going to be sticking around for that, you'll be disappointed. We're going to put it on next week's agenda. Let's go ahead and, I don't have the public invited to be heard, it was quite yet.
It's coming.
All right, I just let you know. All right, cool. But make sure that if you want to speak, it's public invited to be heard, the first one, make sure you get your name on that list, or else you're going to be speaking at the end. So, make sure you speak up. All right, approval of minutes, January 9th, 2018, regular session. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, I move approval of the minutes.
Let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, we've already discussed one agenda revision. Anything else anyone would like to discuss? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I've already spoken a little bit with City Manager Dominguez about our upcoming agendas, and I would like to move to add our Prairie Dog discussion within the next month and a half.
I guess the question...
To a future, within the next month and a half.
Is it on the agenda right now?
That was one of the items that, I believe, you mentioned early on, and we were just moving through different items. And so, I think this is going to need to sort of...
All right, I was waiting for one. All right, do you want to have a problem putting it on the agenda for the next month and a half? All right, I believe I talked to them and committed to doing it after the first, so that would make sense to get that done. All right, and then, City Manager, anything to report?
Uh, Mayor Council, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, time out. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, we almost missed the opportunity to weigh in on a bill in the legislature that's important to Longmont. And so, for the future, I'd like to add a discussion on how we could change the review cycle policy on the bill, so that if a bill is introduced and has a hearing within 14 days, then, and that bill is deemed to be significant, have a significant impact on the city, that we would add it to the next council session, any regular session, so that we could decide if the city wanted to take any action in support or against such a bill.
All right, and then, I guess the Mayor Protam Christensen and myself had a brief discussion with Harold today. What are your thoughts on that? What can we do to just, as far as process goes?
So, I'm going to ask Sandy to jump in. We were going to pull the other item and talk about it, but we've done it a number of different ways. But in the case of the item that we added yesterday, what really happens is, is when you have the first hearing on the item and council wants to testify, and it's off-cycle, it's hard for us to put it on, in terms of the normal agenda cycle. So, I think the way the motion, as I understand it, is this gives us the direction to push it on the agenda, if there's something related to those factors, and knowing that it may come in, like it did this last time on a Monday.
And I guess, I guess the question is...
Sandy, you want to jump in?
So, Sandy, when you, in the past, when we have had bills, right, we usually don't do it twice. We usually, you bring it up, and you ask us what we're going to think about a certain bill, and then we tell you we're for it or against it. Staff gives its, gives it, gives their recommendation. Is that process enough? Meaning, if we just put it on the agenda, isn't that enough? With that, it's all, like tonight, for example, it comes on the agenda, right?
Yes.
And if somebody brings it up, we can put it on the agenda, and then we can vote on it tonight, just like we usually do, and that's it, right? Why not? Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Christensen?
The difference is that we, several of us have been asked to testify. And that's a little different because we don't have time to put it on agenda, to discuss whether we're going to vote for it or not, or testify for it or not. And we would be tested, we could each, of course, go down as individuals, but we've been asked to testify for the benefit of how this bill would affect Longmont. And so, we need to actually decide tonight whether there is a majority approval of us doing that, representing Longmont.
That's what I'm saying. But we don't need, what I'm, I'm talking about process for the future. What I'm saying is, is it enough that we decide tonight whether, like, some of us are going to testify, do we need to change or do anything special in order to get the council approval? We don't need a first or second reading.
No, on this item, if you, we understand if, on this item, once you decided council policy, then you all as a council can go and testify on behalf of the council. I think what Councilmember Martin is saying, in the event that this happens on another bill in the future, having a different process that would allow us to push these items on later in the agenda process.
Right, so let's just put it on as soon as we know. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, and that's exactly what I'm saying, because the instructions the staff had prior to yesterday, were that the bills were put on for review on a regular, every two-week session?
During regular sessions.
Yes, during regulars, every two regular sessions. And that meant that sometimes the bill was already dead before we reviewed it on the schedule. So, this is an instruction that for certain bills, they should jam it onto the next meeting, so that we don't miss it.
I'm a jammer. I say we jam it. So, do we have consensus? Can we just jam it? All right, consensus?
Mayor Bagley, what I'm hearing is that if any council member would like to take a position on the bill, which is, on any bill, which is the current way that we do this, if any council member wants to see a bill brought up, they can certainly do that by just letting me know, or sometimes we bring them up, because we recognize that there's some sort of significance to it. So, what I'm hearing you say is that we will augment the agenda, even up to Monday for a Tuesday meeting, in order to add items to the agenda that are for the community.
Yep, I think that's what we're saying. Okay. Anything else? Do you want to say something now, Seacler, or do you want to wait till after the...
I just need to talk about the items that happened. Not about this.
City Manager's report.
No, I can just talk.
You do? You need to talk now?
Before you let me talk.
Valerie.
I just need to let you know there were two items, for the audience to know, there were two items added to the agenda after it originally went out. They will be on consent, 9O, which will be ordinance 2018-10, and 9P, which is the Senate bill that you guys have been talking about. Now, we'll read the titles of those on the consent. Matt?
All right, thank you. City Manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I have a couple of things. One, speaking of the Prairie Dog item that came up, you, Council, may remember, and those who weren't on council at the time, that one of the projects we were working with was creative learning systems. And it was related to that, but they, because of some of the resilience St. Brain improvements in that area, they were going to need to leave that location. And so, we've been working with them to try to retain them in our community. We actually were able to find a location that satisfied their needs into the future, and that location was actually the facility that we were using for museum storage. As we've, as we're nearing completion of the museum storage facility, that we're hopefully going to move in with the next few weeks, we needed to sign a termination agreement on the existing space. That would actually save us money, because we wouldn't owe the rent going into the future on that space that we're in. It would then be a seamless move. Upon review of that, we were approaching it where we could do a termination of that agreement. It was determined by the City Attorney's Office that we actually needed council to authorize that termination. So, what we're asking is, could we make next week's meeting a regular session, so we can bring that termination agreement to council, so we can move forward with that and retain that company in our community?
Do we have a motion?
I move that we bring that forward at the next, next week, so that we can terminate that.
And make it a regular session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously.
I have one more. So, if Council members, I also briefly talked about a couple of grants that we received. Mike's here today to give a brief update on those, Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief, is here to give a brief update on those grants. We wanted to do this now, because there is a lot of work associated with it, and so you will be seeing positions advertised. Mike?
Thanks, Harold. Thanks, Harold. Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief, Mayor, members of City Council. We're just going to give you a brief description of two grants that the City of Longmont, Longmont Public Safety, received. I'm just going to give you a little background on those grants that are dealing with addiction, and people struggling with addiction, and people struggling with mental health. And I'm going to have Dan Eman just give you a couple of minutes of some specifics of those grants. But I think you all know that Longmont Public Safety, for several years, has been trying to develop new mechanisms, new structures, new ways of doing business to deal with folks who are struggling with addiction and their mental health. For years, we've been involved in the business, as the rest of the police profession and the criminal justice system in this country, with criminalizing these social and health issues, to little or to no effect, to no avail. And so, a few years ago, we went down the road of bringing mental health service providers into the police department that respond on calls for service when we know there might be a mental health issue. And then, last year, January 1st of 2017, we started what we call the Angel Initiative. If someone walks through our doors and they say they have an addiction, we will find them addiction treatment. Along with that, we've also recruited employers that will employ people who are in recovery for addiction. And along with that, we've actually recruited angels in the community, citizens in our community, who come in and serve as a sponsor, supporter of that person who has walked through our doors. And then, in addition to that, there is a community group that's also trying to figure out how to find people housing when they come back. And so, you know, we've gone down this path of trying to criminalize passive laws, stiffening penalties, to try to deal with these issues, these health and social issues, as if these laws and stiffer penalties will serve as an insurance policy that's going to protect us from the human condition. It doesn't. And so, we're here to say that we're fortunate to be able to get these grants. We thought we were poised and ready to receive these grants, given what we were already doing with the Angel Initiative and that mental health program was, it's called Edge. And so, these grants are going to add several million dollars over the next two and a half, three years, and will allow us to really increase our capacity to more effectively serve, more proactively serve, folks who are struggling with addiction and struggling with mental health. And so, I'm also happy to say that the culture within public safety has changed dramatically. People now see folks who are struggling with addiction, struggling with their mental health, as folks who perhaps need a different kind of assistance than being arrested and/or summoned and processed through the criminal justice system. And so, that kind of diverting has been going on, and so, we're ready to kind of move forward with these grants. And so, here to give you just a brief description of some specifics is Dan Eman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Dan Eman. I work for the Public Safety Department, and I'll be implementing these two grants. The first grant is called LEAD. It stands for Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. And the state is running this pilot program based on something that Seattle started in 2011. They were pretty successful on this concept of giving their police officers another option, essentially. Instead of the option of jail, or not, the idea is to kind of apply a public health concept, treat the addiction, treat the reason why this person is committing the crime in the first place, which is their addiction problem. And what we're going to do is build the same system with a little bit of, a little bit of a Longmont twist to it. What we're going to be able to do is bring 11 new positions onboard, to augment a system that really is, like the chief said, ready to do this. Public Safety is ready for this. What we're going to be able to do is build a system that is going to be consisting of peer support specialists, which are people that have lived experience with addiction. And we're going to bring a peer support specialist into the field to meet with the person, meet with the officer on a pre-arrest basis. And we're going to make a connection with that individual and try to connect them to services in partnership with a lot of different service providers in our community. In addition to that, what we're going to be able to do is, on the other side, the other grant is called a co-responder grant. Really, what that's going to do is take our Edge program and make it a whole lot more dynamic. The idea is to match up the skill sets of a paramedic, of a police officer, and a really skilled clinician, to be able to triage the issue of the moment. A lot of the times, what we found is, the issue could be substance abuse in nature, it could be behavioral health in nature, and what we're going to try to be able to do is bring all those skill sets to bear when we need them at the point of contact. What we're also going to be able to do through this program is open up a lot more destinations. Right now, we kind of have a jail or emergency room destination bucket. And what we're going to be able to do through a lot of partnership and additional skill sets in this grant is open up things like inpatient facilities. Are there other places we can take people that we contact in their homes, and really keep them in their homes, if that's the most appropriate place, or take them to the most appropriate destination in the first place? There are dollars in these grants that will allow us to supplement housing support, some treatment provider support, anything that will really help people on their path to recovery. There is partnership all over this grant. When we apply for it, we have letters of support and commitment from the DA, from Boulder County Public Health, from both hospital systems, from the Public Defender's Office. We had 38 letters of support when we submitted this grant. We had all of our treatment providers that are part of the Angel Initiative. We're working in partnership with our Community Services Division. We're, we're reaching out in every possible way that we can to make sure that we're making the connections necessary to help people in their, in their journey to recovery, and fully understanding that this is not going to be a, an easy thing to do, but we know that we're ready, and we know that the community needs this, and we feel incredibly fortunate that we are able to apply these grants and these dollars in our community where, where we live. That's the thumbnail sketch of things. I'm sure we'll be back to give you much more detail, but we'll be advertising these positions pretty quickly, so we wanted to give you some information for those.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eman. All right, now, let's move on to first call, public invited to be heard. Again, three minutes, I hate cutting you off, even if you're saying the best thing in the world, and you're still going to have to do it, because at some point, you're not going to be saying the best thing in the world. All right, so let's go ahead and start with Mahwin. I haven't seen you for a while. Is Mahwin here?
Mahwin Aric.
Sorry. I don't see him.
Mayor, you had an item before this.
Oh, did I?
Yep.
Oh, you, Longmont Multicultural Action Committee, you mean, that one? I was like, I don't see your name on the list, but she wants to speak.
I hope you could see me. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Rose Hoppman, and I'm a member of the Multicultural Action Committee. We have a PowerPoint up to my left, your right, in some cases, for council. So, just to let you know how the Longmont Multicultural Action Committee began, we emerged from a 2001 Community Assessment of Boulder County Latino Needs and Assets. The City of Longmont, the Longmont City Council discussed how to take action on the results at its 2002 annual retreat. They created a five-year strategic plan to guide the community in becoming an inclusive community. The community, they invited the community to guide and participate in its efforts, and the city provided staff assistance and other resources to support plan and implement, to support plan implementation. We are into our 15th year in our fourth strategic plan, and our work continues to be relevant today and into the future. Why LMAC is relevant today? Longmont is a diverse multicultural city and takes pride that when you're in Longmont, you belong. As home to many customs and cultures, Longmont wants to make sure that residents, visitors, and employees find fellowship with others of similar backgrounds, and can explore and join in traditions that are new or foreign. It is important for all people in Longmont to make connections and to thrive as part of our community. So, here we have a community profile. It gives you an idea of the ratio between white, black, African-American, Asian, American Indian, so on and so forth. So, kind of gives you the percentages. Our community profile has to do with, this has to do with St. Rain Valley School District, English language learners. So, we have the blue represents Spanish, and then we have Chinese in the red, Vietnamese in green, and all other non-English. A total of 19.6% of the South St. Rain Valley School District population are English language learners. 12.2% of the English language learners in the St. Rain Valley School District are non-English proficient and limited English proficient. Our purpose and work. The Longmont Multicultural Action Committee is a community-based initiative that guides government officials, schools, businesses, organizations, and residents in working together to ensure that Longmont is a caring and inclusive community for all who live, work, and visit here. Our focus is in three areas. To explore, sponsor and/or support a variety of inclusive community gatherings, cultural events, and other activities that promote understanding and build relationships between. To learn, support a variety of learning opportunities that foster Longmont's connection with people, communities, and cultures around the world. To lead, enhance representation within city and community leadership, governing, governing and advisory roles. To ensure that diverse voices and ideas are considered during the development of new policies and programs. The 2017 LMAC activities included the Multi, the Martin Luther King Celebration, there were 200 in attendance. The Chinese Lunar New Year, there were 1,600 in attendance. Cinco de Mayo, there were 7,000 in attendance. Dia de los Muertos, 6,000 in attendance. Inclusive Community Celebration, 500 in attendance. The IAOR Dipawali Celebration, which is Hindu, there were 200 in attendance. In Los Gigantes, there were 1,500 in attendance. Our outreach included guest opinions and letters to the editor, articles, proclamations, new brochure, posters, marketing materials for special events. posters, marketing materials for special events. The 2018 planned activities, one of them already took place, and that was the Martin Luther King Celebration. It took place January 12th, 13th, and 15th. The Chinese Lunar New Year Celebration is happening February 24th, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Silver Creek High School. And we have grants to support a variety of cultural events, recurring and new. Our outreach is consistent presence on owned and earned media and on social media. Outreach to targeted audiences, webpage enhancements, new member orientation manual, marketing In 2018, our planned activities, we plan to lead by focusing on increasing inclusive representation of for LMAC, to assess current representation, to determine skills and perspectives to enhance LMAC, and to recruit new members. We plan to learn by hosting educational community conversations, identifying guest speakers, outreach to the community, partner and provide resources, target conversations on social justice, mental health, housing, and cultural diversity. Wrapping up, we want to thank you for your ongoing support of this work with the 25,000 annual allocation that you give us. And if you have any comments or suggestions about LMAC's work going forward, we would be, we would love to hear it. Thank you.
Not right now, but if you'd like, here, what we can do.
Okay, I'm in Generation X, so I have a lot to say about this whole thing.
Right, so, hold on one second, one second. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass this down. You can come put your name on this and you'll be, you'll have a chance to speak at First Public Invited to Be Heard.
I'm from Florida.
Yep, you had it all over there.
Well, I'm from Florida, sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry.
All right. So, I don't see any questions, but on behalf of council, thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you.
I see all kinds of friends in that picture and you guys do great work and the events that you guys do is just awesome. So thank you, keep it up, please.
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
All right, now, if I'm not mistaken, we'll go on to Public, First and Public Invited to Be Heard. For what? Keith Caniglio. If you could please state, everybody, state your name, address, and message.
I'll apologize because I'm a parent and a recovering worker, so I don't remember anything. I ramble a lot with my own devices, so I did this. Good evening. My name's Keith Caniglio. I live at 825 Nelson Park Drive. I live about a quarter mile from the Old Bright Horizons Building where people are.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, get up there.
Okay, are we on? Okay, so I live about a quarter mile from the Old Bright Horizons Building. We're looking to possibly construct the Kukua Academy's Addiction Center. I'm here to express my opposition to this move. My wife and I moved here in 1992 from the Bronx in New York City. We grew up in the 80s and 90s during the worst of the crack epidemic and the height of the murder years. So, drug addiction and alcoholism brought me to a lot of funerals before I was 20. I get that we need places to help kids get back on track. I just don't think that a residential area is the right place for them. I also have some points of concern about this deal specifically. First off, I think it's disingenuous to say that we're helping our kids in Longmont because Kukua is a national organization. They're going to be importing young men from all over with no tie to our local communities. We don't know who they'll be, we don't know where they'll be from, and we don't know if they're going to bring other problems with them. So I just think we should be a little bit honest about that. I'd like to know where this has been done before in Colorado, where we embed drug treatment facilities into a residential area, and what the effect has been on local crime and property values. I'd like to see Kukua's track record for success and safety so we can determine in our neighborhood if we want them for neighbors. Their site says they have a girls' facility in Utah, but I found no other details online on a quick search. I did notice that their website said that they have a Colorado facility though, as though this is a done deal, which kind of rattled me a little bit. It would be nice if we could discuss this before we put it on their website that it's done. Even accepting that a residential area was appropriate, I'd like to know why this location was chosen for an addiction treatment center. It's across the street from a liquor store. It's next door to an assisted living facility. We've got two existing pot stores in Niwot and on Boston Road, and it's going to be within walking distance of a pot shop whose application you're currently considering for the corner of Nelson and Hoover. Why not Old Town? Facility residents there would have access to city buildings and services, public transportation, the library, Main Street Stores, and Roosevelt Park for outdoor recreation. It just seems to make a little bit more sense to me. My biggest concern is also the manner in which this was pursued. There was not a whole lot of public input requested since, I guess, talks have been going on since the summer. The people who will literally live with this decision were not involved in the conversation. I'm the vice president of our HOA and I was our neighborhood's NGLA contact, and nobody at any point contacted me directly and said, hey, by the way, we're thinking about building a drug addiction treatment center about a block from your house. The president of the neighboring HOA said he never heard anything about it and he heard about it accidentally in the course of other business with the city. My wife went next to the, next door to the management at Alta Vida Memory Center in the legacy apartments, and both of them are about 50 yards from Bright Horizons. They claimed to know nothing about it and they were shocked that this was going on. So again, it seems like there was some ignorance there. Now, I read the Times call that a number of people spoke in support of fast-tracking this, but those cited listed addresses nowhere near my neighborhood.
I'm going to have to cut you off, but I get your point. We all get your point. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Karen Dyke.
Mr. Mayor and council members. Karen Dyke, 708 Hayden Court. I wanted to make just a few quick comments about the annexation of the land by Quail Road. I do support this annexation, but a couple of comments. The St. Verane School District is planning to build there and oil and gas is planning to drill there. The Longmont regs call for a 750-foot setback from high occupancy buildings. COGCC calls for 1,000 feet. A reminder that this is measured from the wellhead to the edge of the school building, not the school property line, and not the edge of the well pad, which is frequently several acres. A caution that if a school is built after the permit is filed, the distance can be even closer and that's going to happen down in Erie in one of their areas. A third note, that a well that exploded in Oklahoma yesterday burned so hot that the drilling tower melted and fell down. And the fire response was forced to be back half a mile because the fire was so hot and it couldn't get the wellhead turned off. I remain concerned that fracking is coming so close to Longmont in spite of the unknown, of the known risks and we know that it affects our health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Pedro.
Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive, Longmont. Last week you had the open forum. Thank you for listening to all of us. That night you listened to a number of traffic congestion concerns and level F intersections. You questioned how best to get accurate traffic analysis done for upcoming developments. You briefly debated concurrency of infrastructure development and approaching development applications, reasonable standards, and HMS Rogers Road annexation was one of the examples used as a project coming your way that was going to have major impacts on congestion. You directed staff to come back with information soon for a study session dealing with traffic congestion, traffic analysis, and other issues. Item 8C tonight on your agenda is the first reading of an ordinance regarding HMS Rogers Road annexation. It is unfortunate that as the council members are preparing to have a major policy discussion about these issues of traffic congestion and transportation, that you now are considering this ordinance. I hope you have read all the material that's attached to this ordinance. It was quite a massive amount, but particularly page five of the annexation agreement, 52.2.2. The owner has submitted and the city has approved the owner's transportation study. The owner shall update the study with each final plat unless waived by the city. And the minutes, page four of the minutes of the P&amp;Z meeting, 81617, where HMS was discussed. All site intersections at adjacent street network are projected to function at acceptable levels of service in the long-term scenario. So, council members, before you approve this annexation ordinance on first reading, I hope you will have answers for, what is the definition of long-term scenario? What is the impact of, this will be the systems experience in the short-term scenario? What is the planning horizon for building the long-term scenario? And how much money and what are the sources for building the long-term scenario? Unless you have those questions answered, I hope you will table this item until after you have your study session and you consider any policy direction that you need to make on this matter of transportation and congestion and all the other impacts of development. Thank you very much.
John Ko.
Thank you, Mayor and backline council. John Ko, 1899 Third Avenue. I just wanted to update you on some conferences that are coming up that may be appropriate for the city to possibly attend or participate in. On March 8th is a conference on the Open Web Security Program and they have their Snoke Frog Conference in Denver. It might be related to net neutrality issues that may be coming up for the issue for the city now that the, that has changed on the federal level. Also, there is a new conference I'm going to this year, YGO, and I was actually invited to talk at this conference. So, I'm up here partially just trying to embark information for you guys and try and communicate, but this YGO is also a good conference the city might be interested in. I used to go to GIS in the Rockies, which is more appropriate to Colorado, but this is a wide open conference. Has a lot of USGS people in it, as well as COGA people and oil and gas type people. And I think we need to interface with the oil and gas too, for the most part. And I think one of the possibilities we could do is maybe even negotiate some with COGA to maybe even lease and hold some areas that are sensitive, as opposed to try and force them into not developing because COGA is just regulating industry and it really is the owners of the resource that, you know, have a lot of say over the resource itself. Similar to water, you know, when I was in Asia, people were more worried about water because there's a lot of waterborne diseases there. So, I think, I don't think it's straightforward that, you know, gas is evil, we basically need to get into more hydro and more sustainable energy, but we also have to interface with these groups. And these are two conferences where I meet, meet people and I think the city could participate as well. There are quite a few municipalities that come to these and, for example, Denver has a lot of software that they're ready to share with, share smaller municipalities and teach how to extend what they've done. So, thank you and appreciate the city staff and they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Johnston.
Hi, everyone. Brian Johnston, 926 Kaufman. Two things that I wanted to bring up. One, I didn't get to include last week before I ran out of time. You know, it was complimenting staff and, and there was one incident that came up right before the holidays where, and you had to excuse that, I don't recall the exact details of exactly where this was, but it was an easement issue that a gentleman spoke on. And Councilman Rodriguez, you in particular stated, you know, I understand this, but in terms of transparency, I'm going to vote that we... Can you help me with that?
I'm not familiar with the question.
You don't recall this right before the holidays when the big tall gentleman that was sitting right there spoke about an easement issue he was upset about and you guys were about to have a vote on it and you decided to delay it in order to better explain it to that group? Does this ring a bell with anyone? No?
I'm sure it was brilliant, those offers.
Well, no, because I remember particularly Councilman Rodriguez stating, it's like, you know, I work on planning, I understand how this works, but in lieu of transparency, I'm going to hold off and, you know, we want to give time to explain this to the citizenry. I just wanted to explain, I thought that was a good move, particularly in today's world of increasingly distrust of government that helps build confidence and I like transparency. Also, I wanted to thank Jim Golden. He shot, he shot me the numbers last week about the golf information. Excuse me, I didn't realize it was public invite, I didn't realize it was like the open forum. I didn't come prepared. This was all going off memory. But just to clarify, 4.29 million for irrigation, 1.478 for the maintenance building, total of 5.723 million out of a $28.581 million bond. Again, just to reiterate, municipal golf courses are in real bad shape. According to National Golf Foundation, 800 closures between 2006 and 2016. 2017 numbers aren't available. Last year, a total of 157 closures, 14 new ones opened. Gain suffering, just something you might want to look at in terms of long-term resource allocation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm not sure what this says. Travis Offerman.
Yeah, it was from, so, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I want to just applaud you.
Can we, can we get you to really lean down there?
Sorry. I want to applaud all of you for the resolution to make Longmont green energy-wise by 2030 and 50% by 2022. These, it's a must for the entire nation to be that audacious in their goals and it's completely doable. I do want to, I have a letter here that I would like to pass to the council members. You don't need it now. But it's basically that I have solar panels on my roof and I am being charged 75% more at a base cost. Per month, I'm charged $10 extra just for having a net meter and to have solar panels. And so I'm being discriminated against. I'm being penalized for having solar. And that goes against section five of the resolution that was put forward saying that we want to encourage residents and businesses to invest in solar, but if I'm paying $120 extra per year to have them, it hurts. And also, it goes against Colorado law that there cannot be any discrimination for net meter. And so, and I do have the section number under what, under the law. And so, I'm asking the council to please consider looking at that and hopefully removing that. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I don't see anybody else on First Call Public Invited to Be Heard. However, I need to go back just for one second because our city attorney reminded me of something. Councilmember Rodriguez moved, and by consensus we agreed, to put back on the discussion for the Kukua Clinic, for the Kukua Residential Child Care Facility. However, Rule 19 states that after the decision on any question, any member who voted with the prevailing side may move to reconsider reconsider the decision at the same meeting or at the next meeting in which Rule 25 permits final or official action on the subject question. Technically, we need to suspend that rule and then make the motion again. So, would you like to? Would you, thank you, council member. Councilmember Peck, would you like to move for the suspension of Rule 19? And then we can redo that and put it on an agenda. Councilmember Peck.
Yes. Okay, I move that we suspend the amendment, you know, the motion.
Rule 19. Rule 19, rule of procedure.
Let me restate that. I move that we suspend Rule 19 in the procedure.
Okay, let's vote. That passes unanimously. Do we have a motion, Councilmember Peck, to revisit and ask staff to bring back the Kukua issue?
We do. We do. I move that we bring back the Kukua issue and have staff put it on a future agenda.
That passes unanimously. Mr. May, you happy? Let the record reflect, we got a thumbs up by our city attorney. All right, let's go ahead and move on to consent agenda. We have Longmont.
Item eight A is ordinance two thousand and eighteen oh seven, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning of January first, two thousand and eighteen. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for February thirteenth. Item eight B is updates to the plan for funding public improvements associated with James Smucker Development. The first of those two items in Resolution two thousand and eighteen oh six, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs for grant funding for traffic signal installation at Fairview Street and Colorado Highway one nineteen. The second item associated with that is ordinance two thousand and eighteen oh eight, a bill for an ordinance approving an amendment to the Economic Incentive Agreement with James Smucker LLC regarding contributions to site infrastructure costs. Public hearing and second reading of that ordinance is scheduled for February thirteenth. Item eight C is ordinance two thousand and eighteen oh nine, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the HMS Rogers Road Annexation, generally located between Rogers Road and Nelson Road and between Holber Road and Airport Road, and zoning the property P U D R Land Unit Development Residential, P Public, B L I Business Light Industrial, and R three Residential High Density. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for February thirteenth. Item eight D is Resolution two thousand and eighteen oh seven, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Genesis Program. Item eight E is Resolution two thousand and eighteen oh eight, approving the renewal and amendment of the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for the provision of short-term counseling and crisis intervention services. Item eight F is Resolution two thousand and eighteen oh nine, approving the renewal and amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for parent education services. Item eight G is Resolution two thousand and eighteen ten, authorizing an agreement between the city and Winter Family Partnership LLC for the purchase of real property for the Resilient St. Brain Project. Item eight H is Resolution two thousand and eighteen eleven, authorizing an agreement between the city and Pawnee Development LLC for the purchase of real property for the Resilient St. Brain Project. Item eight I is Resolution two thousand and eighteen twelve, approving amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Department of the Army for cost sharing for a feasibility study for flood risk management on St. Brain Creek. Item eight J is Resolution two thousand and eighteen thirteen, in support of the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness, a joint initiative of the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. Item eight K is approved the submission of and authorized the mayor to sign an application for State of Colorado Justice Assistance Grant for the City of Longmont's Youth Redirection Program Rewind, which stands for Rebuilding Expectations and Walking Into New Directions. Item eight L is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city and Wellborn Sullivan MEK and Tulley PC for special council services regarding construction contracts. Item, item eight M, amend the city council's rule of procedure twenty-five to change the Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand and eighteen regular session meeting to Monday, March fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Item eight N is consider amendment to council rules of procedure addressing Friday morning city council work sessions and schedule final approval on February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Item eight O is approved, is the ordinance that was added, O two thousand and eighteen ten, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the St. Brain Valley School District Whale Road Annexation, generally located south of Whale Road, east of Main Street and west of one hundred and nineteenth Street, and zoning the property P Public and A Agriculture. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February thirteenth. And item eight P is to support Senate Bill eighteen oh forty-eight concerning the ability of a local government to exercise land use authority over oil and gas facilities enacting the Protect Act. Staff does not have a need to pull any items.
Longmont, well-read, Valerie. You nailed it. Anyone want to pull any items? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to pull items eight C and, I'm sorry, I can't see the revised agenda. I want to pull the one about the, pardon me? Yes, the Senate bill, thank you. Eight P, thank you.
Councilmember Beck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to pull item eight O.
Right. Mayor Proton Christensen?
This is beginning to sound like a bingo game. I'd like to pull item seven, I'm sorry, J, just for a brief comment.
And I would like to pull item eight B N.
B or something?
I know B and it doesn't sound alike, but it's an N.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move the consent agenda minus C, J, O, N, and P.
There is a motion to move the consent agenda less C, J, O, N, and P. B is included. Do you have a second? That passes unanimously. All right, let's just take them one at a time. Should we start with you, Councilmember Martin? Issue eight C? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. No, I'm just, I'm just trying to hurry and I'm going slow. All right, let's go ahead and move on to items on second reading. Let's go ahead with nine A, ordinance two thousand and eighteen five, a bill for an ordinance submitting chapters eleven point two, eleven point one two and eleven point one six of the Longmont Municipal Code relating the impoundment and abandoned publicly kept or junked vehicles. If we could go ahead, are there any questions of staff before we open up the public invited to be heard? Mayor Proton Christensen?
Not a question to staff, but... I'm sorry, not a question to staff, but just a reminder that last time this came up, Councilman Rodriguez and I both expressed that we wanted to give people an option of where they could go instead of just saying, you can't do this here. You have to be able to say to them, you can't do it here, but you can do it here. So in other words, if the closest place is Loveland or Golden, then we need to give them a direction of where they could go when we give them a ticket.
All right, I guess the only thing that I wanted to comment rather than a question, I know that somebody's going to mention this, and I thought I was going to mention it last time, but I just want to make sure that we all understand. So I had a conversation with the city attorney and the question I have about this particular ordinance is, let's suppose you park your car at six o'clock at night, or you park your car at six in the morning and you come home from work, and then you get in your car at ten o'clock to go to work at night, and you leave at night and all your neighbors don't see you move it, and they call the next morning after you've been working for a week saying, that car is always there. And then we go out and we get a ticket, they put a notice on the car. What procedure or process is there when they come out and go to work and they see that, they see that little notice that they've gotten? What do they do because they're just going to get towed the next day? Or at least that's the fear. So under that scenario, how would this ordinance play out?
Mayor Eugene May, city attorney, so I did check with our parking enforcement folks, and you can request that your tires be chalked to demonstrate that you did move.
So you can call up, so in effect, it would be...
Old school.
Old school, so it's not a hearing hearing, but there would be a hearing with the enforcement folks saying, hey, I moved my car. And they'd either believe or chalk. Okay. Okay, all right, let's move on to the hearing, public hearing on this matter.
This is Hon? Yeah. Yeah, my name's John Flower. I live at seven nineteen Pendleton out on the east side of town. My comment and my question really has to do with the ordinance and not with this particular amendment to it. I don't see any problem with the amendment, but just as was brought up by a couple of council people, that what really are you going to do with these people? When I saw this coming up, I fully understand the reason why this ordinance was put in place was because we had people living in RVs in front of houses where they had no relationship with those people. And that's a problem. If that was in front of my house, I would be demanding some action. My concern, as with many other people I've talked to, I have an RV. It's not real big. It's twenty-three feet long. I park it in front of my house. Nobody lives in it. It's mine. It's my second car. I use it to go shopping in. I don't have another car. I mean, we got the car that, when my wife's out doing something, that's the one I use. The understanding I had when the original one was put together, and I was here for that hearing, is that this is complaint-driven. In other words, if I park it there for a week and nobody has a problem with it, then I don't have a problem. And one time I did get a little ticket on it, and I believe that what happened then was somebody was complaining about a house trailer, not IRV, that was a couple blocks away, and when the code enforcement people were out there, they just drove around and saw mine. I called them afterwards and they insisted that isn't what happened, that somebody complained about that one, and I don't believe them. I'm sorry, don't believe that. I think they're just driving around looking for something. The way I want to make sure that the way this ordinance works is if it's a problem for neighbors and they actually complain about that one specifically, that's when you get a ticket. And the other thing says, okay, if you got this ticket, you got to move six hundred feet away and then you can't come back in seven days. I understand that that means if you're still going to park it on the street. When I got that ticket, I moved it up in my driveway, which is not six hundred feet away, but it's my property. And I sometimes have it in my driveway, I sometimes have it in the street. I think the way this ordinance was put together is a little bit loose on people in my situation where I've got an RV and I put it up in the driveways and I put it in the street. That's not what the ordinance is written for. And it's really not causing a problem. It's a nice shiny new RV. It doesn't, not an old junky one. Can the city attorney clarify that this really is complaint-driven and not just people from code enforcement driving around looking for something to put a ticket on?
I've got thoughts, but council, Mr. May?
Go ahead.
Mayor, Council Eugene May, so I would defer speaking on the enforcement issue to the folks who actually enforce it in terms of whether it's complaint-driven or not, but I can confirm that it's about sleeper vehicles or trailer parked on public property, including any portion of a highway, street, alley, or other right-of-way. So if it was moved on to private property, that provision would not apply.
All right, thank you.
But if I got the ticket, then that would be complying?
Yeah.
Because that's what I did and I didn't have any further problem.
You should be good.
You got a comment?
No, I was going to say something very similar, but I'm acting as...
Yeah, I was just concerned.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Brian Bagley and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. Now is that working? Okay. I'm stand tall. I'm a longtime resident here in the City of Longmont, pretty heavily disabled at this What I have, have here is I have this little citation here. And, you know, they crossed off the back and then they, they put, they, they, they put some of the, you know, the ordinance that supposedly I'm in violation. And essentially what this says here, it says, notice of intent to impound. Okay, this is the Longmont Police Department hereby gives notice to impound this vehicle after eleven zero one, two thousand and seventeen, if the vehicle does not come into compliance with the both indicated violation. Now, one of the things is, is that you look at the violation here, it says it's abandoned vehicle on public property. Abandoned public property vehicle, let's say that's a sleeper vehicle, okay, whatever that means. So my response is, is that, you know, it's not abandoned, you know, the vehicle gets moved on a regular basis. It's, the reason it's where is, is that there's, you know, I have personal connections in that area and it's, you know, it's, it's not in front of somebody's house. It's in, so one of the things I looked here, it says, well, hey, you know, this is kind of vague, you know, what's a sleeper vehicle? And it's a public property, forty-eight hours, you know, so, you know, that, that didn't seem like it was, and the thing is, you know, they chalked my, my tires and stuff. But what it says here is that, okay, we don't have to give you another notice. So they're saying I'm in violation at this point, and let's say they, they decide I'm in violation again, they're just going to tow it. That's basically what this says. So now, I'm kind of aware of both the U.S. and the Colorado constitutions have, you know, the U.S., they have the Fourth Amendment, that anytime you have, if the government's going to take your property, they have to go through a due process. They just can't sort of declare your property in violation of something.
I'm going to have to cut you off, Stan.
Well, I...
It hurts, I know, but the time's up. And if I let you keep going, then I'm going to have to let everybody keep going.
Okay, can I just finish the one last thing?
I can't, I'm sorry. I know it's, you of all people, I would love to have you keep going, but I just can't.
Public, just a public hearing? Well, I went to the court, couldn't get a hearing.
Okay, so what, but what we can do, again, we can talk offline after, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else want to talk at the public hearing? No? All right, are there any other further questions, comments, concerns from council members? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would move passage to ordinance two thousand and eighteen oh five.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes five to one with Councilmember Martin against. All right, let's move on to nine B, ordinance two thousand and eighteen oh six, a bill for an ordinance submitting Title II, Chapter two point oh eight, creating a new section one sixty-five of the Walmart Municipal Code regarding a voluntary juvenile redirection program. Are there any questions from council for staff? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public, open up a public hearing on this ordinance. No one looks, wants, no one wants to speak, it looks like. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing. You have a motion, please. Councilmember Peck?
I move passage of zero two eighteen, two zero eighteen oh six.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously. All right, now, let's go back to the consent agenda. Councilmember Martin, let's go ahead with item C.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I feel like this is, this is the item where we had questioned the impact on, this is the item where we had questioned the impact on traffic previously. This, the traffic study that, that came with the application says it's going to create a mess, going to have, have intersections with E and F-level performance for an unspecified amount of time. And given that we are going to have a discussion about the traffic study and how the city treats traffic studies in particular... treats traffic studies in particular, I think we should table this application until that is all settled.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would appreciate that, and actually would like to have the study before we do this annexation, mainly because I've had these questions before on other developments, basically County Road 1 and 17th, what is the other one, Pike and Hoover? It's the same exact question as to what is the traffic study for this area? And is the development going to impact it to the point that we can't, these arterial roads cannot sustain this traffic? And at what point in the long term are we going to be able to upgrade these roads for the traffic mitigation that we, that we need for the development? So I would like to, I agree, I will agree to that, that we table it until we give that traffic study an update from, I guess it would be Tyler Stamey and Dale Radamaker. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Well, I respectfully disagree. I think this application came in, it's met all the review criteria, it was voted on by Planning and Zoning 7 and 0. Putting something else into the mix at this point is adding criteria that wasn't there before, or could lead to that, which is certainly unfair. This is to annex some property that clearly is, property that should be annexed, that's in our planning area, and to stop it now seems frivolous to me.
Mayor Protem Christiansen?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it's frivolous. I realize that this would slow the development down slightly. It's been in the works for many years, and I do think that, I've stood at the corner of Airport Road and Nelson, and watched the kids trying to cross those roads, and it's frightening. And we've had this discussion, as Councilwoman Peck said, with Renaissance, with several other areas. I would like to wait and just delay this slightly. We're certainly not stopping this. This is a very good development. But we're delaying it slightly so that we can get better traffic information. I think that's worthwhile.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that there's kind of two questions here on the table, specifically concerning the difference between concept plans and annexation agreements. For instance, I know there are pieces of property within the city that have been annexed for multiple decades and have never actually been developed, for instance. So I do feel that there's kind of two questions here that we're talking about. And so as in concern with the annexation, I feel that we're probably okay to go forward. When it comes to the concept plan, is when I do find it, and I also share with you the same kind of concerns as far as traffic are concerned. And I actually did have the opportunity to meet with Tyler Stamey last Thursday, and I believe, if I'm not incorrect, that we, our development code does specify a certain service level, that being D, and that we cannot fall beneath D. Otherwise, we'd be obviously coming out of compliance, and especially for new development coming in. So I think those would be better suited being addressed during concept plans, as well as their meetings with the Planning and Development Services, as well as, or the hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So in that regard, I am comfortable voting on the annexation, knowing that we can, we can continue to have the traffic conversation going forward and have it be a substantive conversation, where we could possibly, you know, we would be able to get basically up to D at the very least, which is what our code says currently. So in that case, I support the annexation.
I'm just going to jump in since we've all gone. Just my thoughts are, I've got a couple of concerns. First of all, first and foremost, there was a letter in our packet, okay? November 20th, 2017, there was one objection. Well, there was, there were other objections, but this one struck me as interesting. It's from Cobank. The objection was, "This letter is to advise that the bank objects, who owns the mineral rights, to the proposed development to the extent it will disrupt future access to our subsurface mineral rights. There are plans to drill." And this, I mean, right now, we have oil and gas regs that state that there shall be no heavy industry within residentially zoned areas. And so if we don't annex this property, which we're not doing tonight, it's just first reading, this is a very simple way to make sure that Cobank and others aren't going to be drilling right there on the edge of our town. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, I respect Gordon Pedro a great deal. First six months on council, he was very, very helpful in showing me the ropes. When he says he has a concern, I listen. I went and talked to staff, as well as went back to the developer, who, I want to point out, I voted against all three residential developments the last time they've come before council. In this particular case, the A, B, C, D, E, F, the Green Book, which I would read, I'd look really smart if I read it, but I left it up on the desk. But the development book categorizes these things, D is essentially the urban planning standard. And in this particular case, at peak times, and they give the example in the Green Book as during the day at peak shopping hours, and also during the commute time in the morning and the afternoon, during that time, you'll get some congestion with car lengths described as eight car lengths between cars. And then when you go up to C, I mean, A and B are just ridiculously, like, nobody's on the road. But then when you go to C, it states clearly in there that nobody, most cities and towns don't require C because it's cost prohibitive. And so in this particular case, then I also asked a question, which was, well, what does it mean, long term? Well, as we're looking at Chuknova, we're looking at, anyway, I don't remember all the others, but there's a whole slew of development going on in this particular area. Everybody is being assigned their piece of the road. You've got the fairgrounds, you've got HMS project, you've got Tebow, you've got, I mean, there's all these pieces coming together right now, they're in the pipeline, that they're going to build this road. And so, and so my thoughts are this, we're not deciding tonight, but I do know that there will be a presentation at the next regular session, where the developers and Habitat for Humanity will be offering a presentation on the project, on what they'd like to do. My proposal is, we get them there, we hear what they have to say, they can answer our questions at the public, public hearing, and if we want to table it, I would suggest we do it then, after, after giving the developer and Habitat for Humanity an opportunity to at least present the project. We can all soak up and look into what's going on with drilling now to the west of our town.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I have to confess that I was unaware of the drilling issue on the west side of town, and I agree that that would be a really tremendously bad thing if it's real. And I'm not questioning that it's real in any way, other than I think we need more time to consider it. I am concerned independently, with Mr. Pedro's concerns, about the E and F traffic. I heard, you know, this is my ward, I heard people talking about fearing for their children's lives when they cross that street to get to middle school. I have heard people talking about, at the other end of my ward, about similar congestion from apartment buildings on South Hoover, at Pike, and Plateau Roads, on both ends of Plateau Road and Pike Road. We are just really creating traffic congestion left and right. And the other concern I have finally is that we're putting more residential stuff in the airport area, and I get complaints about people unhappy with airport noise everywhere I go. So I would be willing to build a house in that area to stop drilling, but that's about the only reason I can think of for doing it. I don't like the annexation at all, so, you know, I, I do not know what the correct procedure is for handling this, but I think that we need a lot more consideration about the problems that this particular annexation is going to cause.
Mr. May, do you want to address the procedural issue? Or do you want me to? Do you want to? Okay, I'll just do it. So tonight, we do first reading.
I know that.
All right. Okay. And then, all right. If it passes, we do second. If it doesn't, we wouldn't. And then, Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. First of all, I think this is a great development. I don't have any problem with the development. And I think asking for a definition of what the long-term development is for our traffic mitigation isn't asking too much. I think the council needs to be apprised of what the long-term means. What do we, when are we going to update these roads? Do we have the money for it? What incentives are the developers going to put into that to make it happen? That's really important. We're putting people on these roads. And I don't want fracking or development of gas and oil anywhere at this point. But right now, the question is, what is our long-term plan for developing traffic or mitigating traffic? What is the city's plan? And that's what I'm asking for before we okay the annexation. To Mayor Bagley's point, he mentioned all these developments that are going to impact these roads. We're only talking about one. So to, so to ask for a traffic update or a description of what our traffic department's plan is for our arterial roads that we are putting a lot of people on, I think that's wise of us to do that. So, and to Councilman Rodriguez's point, this can come up in the concept plan, but the concept plan that we get at council is not always the concept, the concept plan that goes forward. The concept plan that I have been told, when these annexations, when these developments come forward, has been, when I, when I've expressed concern about the concept plan, I've been told it's only a concept. It's not, it may not actually be what is built. So I still think that we should just table this, not because I think it's a bad development, but I think that we owe it to the city, we owe it to ourselves, to know what our traffic plan is for the city.
Mayor Protem Christiansen?
I agree with that. I don't, I think that delaying it slightly so that we have better information is a prudent plan, and I realize that delaying it by a few weeks is an inconvenience for the developer. But they're a good developer, and they do understand delays. This is not, we're not tabling it to take it away. We really don't want to stop this development. We just want better traffic information for the safety of the town.
One more point that I want to make that I'm aware of, that has not been said, and I was hoping staff would say it. They already did this once, meaning they passed this first reading once, and staff made an error. And they're now three months behind schedule as a result of our staff. So not to blame staff, but I'm blaming staff. So again, I guess I would, I would move that we actually, I would actually move that we pass ordinance 2018-09, so we can go on to a second reading, and then give them the opportunity to address the traffic concerns. I know there's traffic maps, and so that's my motion.
Mayor Bagley, Members of Council, Joni Marsh, Director of Planning and Development Services. So Dale Radamaker and I have been looking towards putting together a session for council as you've discussed. We believe we can have that ready probably in the next three weeks. So we think that requesting that is fine, and we can try to fit it in a study session. And if it does get to second resolution and our paths cross, then tabling it to a date certain for second reading would give us enough time to get that information to you and make sure you have all your questions answered.
Councilmember Martin?
Ms. Marsh, I would like, oh, I would like to understand why it takes three weeks to get the information together if it's already been approved once.
I'll let Dale talk a little bit about what we were planning to put together, which is not just simply the traffic study for this application.
Yeah, Dale?
Sure. Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, I think the time is, is that we're not intending to simply come back on the single application. Now, if that's what the council wants, that's a different proposition. I think that what I was discussing, which was to look at and really talk to the council in more depth with regards to sort of the relationship between the transportation system and Invision Longmont, the relationship of the road plan that we have done out to 2035, how our traffic engineers receive and review traffic studies. It was looking at it more from a overall systems approach as opposed to a single item. And that does take some coordination time between the transportation planning staff and the transportation engineering staff, I think, to do good work in order to bring back to you something that's helpful.
I'll accept that. I think that's, I'm intrigued enough by hearing that, that I'll, I'll be bribed.
And then, and then to bribe, to bribe you further, we'll then put it on the, we'll put it on the agenda after that meeting, so that people have the chance to address their traffic concerns. So seeing no further debate, let's vote. Was there a motion?
Have you voted?
I moved it.
But there was a, didn't General Marson make the motion?
There was, there was a motion. So the motion was passage, to move it to second reading for ordinance 2018-09. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote. It passes four to two, with Councilmember Peck and Mayor Protem Christiansen dissenting. So let's get our traffic study done.
So then to be clear on why...
Having our traffic presentation.
So then to be clear on what Joni said, is we'll have to come back on the 13th of February, table to date certain in the future, so that in between that time period, we can have the traffic study conversation.
Sounds good.
Is that clear?
That's clear. Just remind us, or forget.
We will. We'll have to put that in, we'll put that in the council.
Thank you. All right. What about item J? Who pulled that? All right. Mayor Protem Christiansen?
Once again, I want to thank Councilwoman Finley for bringing this forth. As I said last time, I tried to get the previous mayor to sign on to this for the past four years, so I'm glad we're doing it now. I would also, this, this resolution is a very good idea.
Yes.
It's a resolution. However, I would like to see us actually add into this, that we work with Veterans Community Project, which is at veteranscommunityproject.org. They're out of Kansas City, Missouri, and they are actually building tiny home veteran villages. And they have had a lot of success with that. And it is something, given that we have approximately 13 veterans, it's something we should, we could surely find a place for and do here. And it's something we could actually do within a year if we get community support and if we get everybody on board with this. And it would really be a wonderful project for a lot of vets. Vets need to talk to vets. That's much more helpful than having them scattered all over. So I would just like to add that to this resolution, that we work with Veterans Community Project.
Your motion, you'd like to make?
Okay. I move that we, that in addition to passing this resolution, we direct staff to check contact and try to work with Veterans Community Project from Kansas, Missouri, Kansas City, Missouri. Do I have a second?
All right. We have, we have a, Councilmember seconded that. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. We actually have had staff and some other folks look at that project as a, something that we could maybe mirror or just use as a template. We have, our next meeting is this Friday at 1:00 at the Longmont Association Wheelters Building. We do have the Habitat for Humanity folks. They were at the last meeting. They are part of that project in Kansas City. He was going to talk to them as well in Kansas City to see how they worked it. So, that is already part of the mix. So, thanks for bringing that up, but it is something we'll look at. We'll have to look at, the information that we'll be looking at this Friday is of the veterans that we've identified, how many need supportive housing? How many could use something like the Kansas City model? And what are the other resources that we need to make that happen? So, thank you for bringing that up, but it is part of it. And I hope you'll come to that meeting on Friday.
So, we have a motion, a second on the table. We can either make it official or trust Councilmember Finley. Who does want to do it? Mayor Protem Christensen.
I suggest we trust Councilwoman Finley since she's moved forward for this. So, and I'm glad that I know about this now. So, I'll be there, and that'll be great.
So, the chair will consider the motion with your mind. All right. Then, we have a motion? Can we have a motion? Just, by the way, it does say it's a resolution in support of the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness. But I would like to thank Mayor Protem Christensen and Councilmember Finley for doubling up and making sure this gets pushed forward. Thank you. So, do we have a motion? One of you two would be appropriate. Councilmember Finley?
I would like to move passage of Resolution 2018-13.
We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. Councilmember Peck, are there anything, is there anything else on here that you want to stick around for? And what I'm saying is, I guess, let, let
It did sound quite funny.
What I'm saying is that, do you want to be excused at this point?
Just for the, just for the people. I need to leave early, and I think that's what
Yeah, do you want, what I'm saying is that
Mayor Bagley was referring to. He's not really getting rid of me.
The chair is deferring to Councilmember Peck to say, is there, what do you want, if any, to talk about before you sneak out? Is there anything else that you need to be here for?
I need to leave by 9:50.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'm good. Thank you both for
Just making sure. Dang it, she's going to stay. All right. Let's go ahead with O. N? Is it N? Okay, let's go, N. We're going to go in order. We can go, we can do N. All right. Consider amendment to Council Rules of Procedure addressing Friday morning city council work sessions and schedule final approval on February 13, 2018. I pulled that one. My mom's calling. Do you mind if I take it? Yeah, so, here, on one, so, I've gotten a lot of calls and comments, and I've got a concern, a couple of, a couple of things. I think in theory, it sounds great to meet as a council. Give us the opportunity to have discussions, to interact in a format that's not me calling on people and us being formal and having decorum. So, on one hand, I really think it's a good idea to just have an opportunity to talk. On the other hand, I'm concerned that if we put more meetings on the agenda, especially on Fridays during the workday, I can get away. Either you have to be a business owner who's financially capable of getting away and taking the time off, or be wealthy enough to take the time off or retired. But I just don't, I guess I would be concerned that there would be members of our community who would be unwilling and unable to participate in the public service that we do if there were more meetings during the workday. And then, I also still, the most of the complaints or concerns and questions had to do with, what are you guys going to do when the TVs are on? What are you guys going to do when it's not? What are you guys going to do? And so, most of those arguably came from the right. But then again, if this council ever shifts to the right again, I'm sure the left would have the same concern. So, I just at least thought it would be worth mentioning before we voted on it. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I was wondering if we could, instead of doing it on another day in the morning during the work week, if we could have maybe once or twice a month, and this is just for discussion, but it would work better for me if we could do it, a dinner meeting before a meeting? You know, a dinner before a meeting, a regular meeting. So, on Tuesday night, we come at 5:30, have an informal dinner where we could discuss the things that we would discuss here. But it would be the same night so that we wouldn't be taking up another day. And it would be before a meeting, so we have to eat anyway. And it just, to me, that would make more sense. I can see the value of another, you know, a less formal meeting. But, you know, it's going to be hard for me to make some of those Friday morning meetings. That's usually when I have all of my doctor and knee doctor and all those appointments because I work the rest of the week. So, but if we could do it right before a Tuesday night meeting, or, you know, around a dinner table, I think that that would work better for me if that worked for anybody else.
Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Councilmember Finley, we actually nailed it on Friday because we were thinking about you. So, maybe it didn't work out right, but I frankly don't care when it is. What I want is the ability to have a conversation with all the council members that is not subject to a broader rules of order because frankly, it is impossible for us to inform one another about our considerations and and come to the best solutions. I'm sure that there are solutions that have been overlooked because we have not had this kind of conversation. And I certainly, in a 40-year career of building things that worked, have never had an organization attempt to do it this way. And so, you know, we've always gotten things to work by sitting around the same table and hashing things out in conversation. And I certainly don't care when it happens, and I don't care how many people come to see it. I'm wel, I would welcome anyone. But I do care that we have it. I care a lot. And I also find it very surprising frankly that not a single person has objected to the plan to me.
Mayor Protem Christensen.
While Councilwoman Finley's idea for dinner is not a bad idea, the truth is that we very, very often have 5:00 meetings anyway. And it would be, I want this to be something that we do regularly so that it is not yet one more thing that interrupts. I mean, we all have, we don't just, for the few people who are still out there listening to us, we don't just have these several hours at night. We all put in many, 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 many other hours. And it's necess, council, this meeting at council is at least regular, and that's a nice thing. This would be a regular meeting too. Whether people can come or not, that's optional. I want this to not exceed an hour and a quarter because we don't have time. And it's, to me, really essential because as people who are subject to the sunshine law, which is a good thing, we can never meet in more than two people at a time. And that makes it incredibly difficult for us to actually know what's going on. And we need to be able to sit down in a room and just have an informal discussion, and also inform each other about what, all these other different things that we're doing. It's true, we could sit and go to all these other meetings in addition to the meeting that we go to, but that isn't what we want. I want to hear Aaron summarize in three minutes what he heard at a certain meeting because I trust him to be able to summarize. Or Bonnie, or Marcia, or Joan, or Brian. Because that's much more concise. And what we need is something concise, and we also need the opportunity to discuss these things in a less formal setting. And because we're not going to take any actions, and there will be no need to take notes because our notes are only taken based on actions. That's the sort of notes that we have for councils. So, we are not trying to create more trouble for staff, and we're certainly not going to try to create more trouble for ourselves. But we're trying to do a better job. That's the whole point of this.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I too don't care what time it is. Again, we were taking in Councilwoman Finley's day off was Friday. She works four-day week. So, we thought, well, that would be a good time because then she could come. As well as Mayor Bagley, with, I was thinking that early in the morning, he probably wouldn't be in court. So, or he would be more free to attend. But I agree, the very discussion that we had about the veterans, those are the things we want to talk about. And Councilwoman Finley could have informed all of us at that time, and we could just banter back and forth about what it's about or what we are actually hearing on our other, at our other meetings. So, again, I don't care about the time. A dinner meeting would be great, but I don't think the staff should pay for dinner for us. So, yeah, we'll get a sponsor.
So, now we don't get food at the meeting?
No food.
This is getting worse and worse by the minute.
Yeah, that's it. We'd get your breakfast burrito at 8:00 in the morning, but forget dinner. So, again, the time, I don't care about the time that much.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I'd like to introduce the term "problem solving." The kind of discussion that we want to have is problem solving. And this format in particular is simply not conducive to that. It's not even conducive to the transmittal of information from one council member to another. I actually don't like the idea of dinner because if you're eating dinner, you're not talking. And yeah, if we, if we don't have any food, you know, I think what we ought to do is make, is have finger food that we can eat at council. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. But anyway, I don't care when it is, but I do want it to happen.
Councilmember Rodriguez, you're not on the, you're not, you haven't clicked. What do you think?
I'm in favor of the meetings, also for information as far as it's been alluded to sometimes. I don't think a lot of folks are necessarily aware that we are on at least, you know, seven, seven to 10 boards and commissions apiece outside of city council. And so, it would be helpful for me to say, get briefed on what the airport advisory board is doing, or Housing Authority, or Housing and Human Services. You know, especially some of the big guns, you know, and especially, I think it'd be helpful for me to be able to also talk to council from the planning and zoning perspective as well because that obviously, a lot of the issues that we face here on council. So, specifically for those reasons, I'm definitely very much in favor of one or two meetings per month. Again, I'm also not attached to a particular day.
All right. The only other, the only thing that nobody else is on the list. So, just what I was going to throw out is because it's going to be, so, we can meet two of us, we can even meet three of us without it being posted as long as it's in an open place. So, even, I believe the door can be shut, but just can't lock it technically. So, but if we're going to meet four, you know, regular and posted is fine. However, our rules of procedure say that we do need to keep minutes if we're having a council meeting. So, as long as we're talking about things and there's someone there to take minutes that will be shared with the press, who's obviously welcome. Just want to make sure that we understand that it's going to be a meeting, and it's going to be open, and it's going to be public. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'm a little confused about what the minutes would need to contain. We described this meeting as optional, so sometimes we will have five people, hopefully soon six people present. Sometimes we might only have two people present. But the stipulation, I believe, was that we could not take any actions. In other words, that it's like another study session. It's not like a regular session. And if we make those stipulations, then wouldn't the minutes contain who was present and very little else?
Mayor Protem Christensen?
Yeah, I think so. And I think, I believe it's also a requirement that we have an agenda. But what we could have is a standing agenda that we would spend, say, 35 minutes with each one of us talking for five minutes on our, reporting on our boards and commissions. And then, we could open up the next half hour or two whatever issue is maybe generated by things that happen on the boards and commissions. I mean, if we just have a standing agenda, it will be less trouble for staff to, you know, to put up an agenda.
And I guess my thoughts are, it's not so much the, what are we going to be talking about? It's like, let's suppose for a second, the airport board. You know, that's on the agenda, airport board. We might have a discussion that revolves around, you know, maybe the airport board comes to us and says, we want to develop any and all area around the airport. Sell half the airport land, I don't know. But, and we decide that we need to get rid of the entire airport board, but we're not going to take action until the next meeting. Well, that discussion, how that sausage is made, so to speak, needs to be done, I think, in a public forum. And so, having a staff member present who can then take meeting, Mayor Bagley recommended that we get rid of the airport board. Councilmember Martin responded, you're nuts. I don't think we should. Mayor Bagley had eight waffles for breakfast. I mean, so, my point is, not the topics are important, but more importantly, it's the discussions that I assume that those discussions will lead to, hopefully, I mean, if we're going to have a meeting, let's have a meeting that's going to be productive, which means that we're doing it to hash out and have a conversation about what we should do in the future, which means that, you know, history should be kept of, you know, our thoughts and our processes that will then lead to a public vote. And so, that's, that's all I was suggesting. Harold? Or not Harold? Eugene May? Well, I mean, you're sharing with Harold. Mr. May?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, City Attorney again. Just on the issue of minutes, I did do research into this. The Colorado Open Meeting Law only requires minutes be kept for open public meetings for which there is formal final action. It's actually a charter requirement that requires written minutes of the proceedings of each meeting of council shall be kept by the city clerk and signed by the mayor. And so, it is compliance with a charter that is requiring that minutes be kept. I would defer to the city clerk. I think there are many different styles of minutes that can be kept. And what would actually result from this meeting, I think would be a work in progress, subject to the clerk's discretion.
I would like the minutes to be kept in poetic haiku. That's not a motion.
I volunteer.
Just so you do know, we do keep study session Sorry. We do keep study session minutes, and the mayor signs them. We just don't bring them back for approval here. So, all of your study sessions do have a complete set of minutes. And it captures some of the basic conversation around what you're discussing.
So, the one thing that's not in here is time. What time would we meet on Friday? Not too early, though. Mayor Protem said early. Mayor Protem Christensen?
I do not like getting up early. But I would get up early because it would make it easier for everybody to get on with their thing. And it would make it easier for Councilwoman Finley
Finley to move on with the days she has off, and for you to get to court, and for Aaron to get on with his job, whatever it is you do, and singing. I would like it not to, as I said, not to exceed an hour and fifteen minutes, because then we're just going, blathering on and on and on. If we just are concise about it, and do it in a fairly businesslike way, I am not in favor of long meetings.
So, four forty-five till six?
No, eight to nine fifteen.
That's actually not a bad time. Any other thoughts on time? All right. So, all right, Councilmember Martin?
Oh, thank you. Just for the record, I think that's not enough time, but I'm, I think that we could start with that much, and if we find that we consistently wish we could run over, then we'll lengthen it. I'm being reasonable.
Does somebody want to make a motion? Well, I pulled it. I don't want to move it, though. Councilmember Martin? Go ahead and move it for me.
I move that we adopt. What, it's twenty eighteen dash oh, is that correct?
Uh, number N.
N.
H N.
I move that one.
Do I have a second? Oh, Mr. May?
Eric, council, the rules of procedure provide that you introduce it at a meeting, and then it cannot be acted on until the next regular meeting. So, we are just introducing it at this point. If council looks like they're willing to adopt, we will carry it over to the next regular session, at which you can actually amend the motion procedure.
Do you need a motion for that?
Just direction, carry it forward.
That's it? You just need direction? All right, let's vote on it. Two people seconded it.
Could I have clarification? I'm not sure what we're voting on.
And the motion fails. Too late, voting ended. Let's throw out the result, I'm just kidding. I think the motion was, the motion was to give direction to staff that we're going to proceed forward with the idea that we would meet two days, two times a month on Friday mornings, and then we'll figure out the details at the next meeting. So, hitting the plus means, yes, we want two more meetings. We love meetings. Hitting negative means, I hate meetings. Anyway, that's all that matters. All right, we vote again? All right, Mayor Protem?
Just to clarify, what we want is to meet before a regular session. Not necessarily two times a week.
No, no, two times a month, every other day.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we don't need any more meetings. So, we would meet in, on the Friday, or whenever, before the next regular session.
Well, that's technically not part of the motion, but we could certainly discuss that between, yeah, the next time we go around. Right, Mr. May?
Mayor, council, the Friday before regular meetings is in the draft amendment.
Okay.
And I wrote the draft amendment, I tried to capture what I heard. I intentionally did not set a specific time, just Friday mornings in general, to have some flexibility. Also, I did not put any time limit on the meeting. Didn't arise in conversation, but if, you know, council wishes to put those things in, we can.
Yeah, for now, I think we're good, right? Do we have a motion?
And then, at least for the procedure for passage of amendment to the rules of procedure, it's like first reading, second reading. We're at the first reading stage, we move it on to the second reading.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right. It looks like four of us love meetings, and two of us hate meetings. So, motion passes, with Councilmember Finley and myself against, but I'm still going to show up, so. Because I don't dare skip. Yes, Councilmember Martin, indeed. All right. Okay, what else have we got here? Looks like we got O. Pulled O. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to vote for this annexation. I just have a remark to make. When I was reading the minutes from planning and zoning, one of the comments made by staff actually made me take pause, and the answer that was given to the potential wells by oil and gas that will be drilled, the comment made was that on directional drilling, that there would be no impact to the school, because we haven't had any impact in, in the past. Given what's going on with flow lines and gathering lines with these oil and gas developers, I think that staff needs to be, I just want to go on record, saying that I think that there is definitely an impact to these schools for flow lines and directional lines. But I do want to annex this, so that we do have some control over that. Thank you, and with that, I am going to move, which one was it? It was O. I am going to move consent to item zero two eighteen ten, twenty eighteen ten.
Do I have a second? I should just start seconding everything. All right, let's go ahead and vote, if there's no further discussion. And the motion passes unanimously. Last but not least, P. Councilmember Martin, did you pull this one? Or was it you, Mayor Protem? Support Senate Bill eighteen oh four eight concerning the ability of a local government to exercise land use authority over oil and gas facilities enacted Protect Act. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Yes, I pulled it. The problem that I'm having is, is with my Dropbox, I can't see the amended agendas, so it's a little confusing. Okay, I just want to say that, first of all, this is the reason for wanting to amend the policy that the, that the staff uses for bringing forward bills. This is a bill that, that would return local control to municipalities for oil and gas, essentially like any other stinky, smelly, poisonous business. We've been using the example of a tannery, and how we have every right not allow there to be a tannery in the middle of Longmont, but we don't have the right to have, to not have an oil well in the middle of Longmont. So, this bill will restore that right to us as a home rule municipality, and I think everyone in Longmont would feel much happier if that were true. Four of us would like to go support the bill in the kill committee, because we want it to be really obvious that the, that the Senate tried to dispose of this bill in a screaming hurry. And they tried to dispose of it so fast, that no cities would get their act together and come down and oppose them. So, I just wanted to get that on the record, because I'm one of the people that's going down there, and if anybody else who's going down there wants to speak, then I think they should, too.
All right, would you like to make a motion?
I move adoption.
We have, we have a motion in a second for adoption of eight P. Council support for Senate Bill eighteen dash oh four eight concerning the ability of a local government to exercise land use over oil and gas facilities. Further discussion, let's vote. Passes, with Councilmember Finley against. And that concludes our consent agenda. All right. I am not going to try to dismiss you, Councilmember Peck. You are free to leave, whatever you want. Final call, public invited to be heard. Paul?
I realize I did not say my name when I came up here, my address. I'm Travis Altomat, twelve ninety-one Armstrong Drive. Wanted to, during the discussion of...
Papers, papers upset, because they can't hear you, and they want to hear, so get in there. Pull it, pull it down toward you.
About the veterans and housing them, I was actually talking to Ward one, candidate, candidate, thank you, Josh, on Saturday, about the Safeway on Pace and Seventeenth, about making that into low-cost homes for, but I'm now thinking that it might even be excellent for veterans, because I can only assume that it's large enough to house at least sixteen decent-sized condos or apartments, maybe even two stories, and then a central meeting area for them to do any type of activities, or anything like that. So, that might be a possibility, because I know some people were asking what's going to happen to it, it's kind of blighted at this point. But, I mean, parking is already there, infrastructure, bus stop is right there as well, so it seems like an excellent location for low house, low-income housing or veterans. And then, I also am curious, and I don't expect an answer right now, with the road studies and traffic studies, are the advancements of autonomous driving and ride-sharing and all of that, is that being taken into account when these traffic studies are happening? We definitely won't see that for probably another two, three years, but then again, that's litter, red, or under corner, and in ten years' time, it's probably going to be very rare to actually see people buying vehicles, because the cost of renting a vehicle per mile is going to be so inexpensive, that it's, it's really way too expensive to actually own a car anymore. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else at the podium, let's go ahead and move on to mayor and council comments. Anybody dying to make a comment? Mayor Protem Christiansen is dying to make a comment. Go ahead.
Once again, I would...
Turn on your mic.
Once again, I would like to thank Marv's towing for bailing my son out when he left his lights on all day long, while he was at a class. Anyway, I would like to comment on the oil and gas testimony that we're going to give. Previous councils have said, again and again and again, that we are just Longmont City Council, we should just deal with issues in Longmont, and nothing outside of Longmont, that we can't change anything outside of Longmont. But we actually must. Maybe that was possible in a former time, but it really isn't, and it actually hasn't been like that for a very long time. We, all of the, most, many, many, many of the issues that are problematic in Longmont come from the state, state issues, or regional issues, or national issues, or even global issues, and we need to participate as if we are actually citizens of the United States, and that's what we're doing. So, we're not trying to interfere with anything. However, we fought very, very hard for oil and, to have home rule status and protect that, and we had a charter amendment to our constitution to forbid oil and gas development within the city limits. And we lost that on a statewide basis, and we should not have, in my opinion. And that's why we're continuing to do that, to fight for our right to have home rule status, and that's what we're going to be doing for the citizens of Longmont this coming Monday. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, the reason I voted no on that was not that I don't think local government shouldn't have control over oil and gas, I just, there are some technical problems with that particular bill, and that's the reason I wouldn't vote for it if I were in the legislature, and that's the reason I don't support it. The thing that I wanted to talk about, though, is Monday night, I went to Longmont Estates Elementary School, and listened to Rachel Scott's brother. Rachel Scott died in Columbine, and there's a thing now called Rachel's Challenge, and they're doing a program at Longmont Estates Elementary, which is helping kids learn how to reach out to other kids, how to be nice to one another, how to be civil, how to help people, and it was just so inspiring, it really was. I wished more folks would have come out on Monday night, it was very cold, so they didn't have a big crowd, but if you ever get an opportunity, check it out, it's called Rachel's Challenge, and I think it's rachelschallenge.org, and I think it should be in all our schools, because I think it really can make a difference if we just find kids early and, and stop bullying, and it's just a great program. It was cool.
All right, I don't see anybody else, just, I just want to thank my fellow council members for, for being, just, just thanks for the continued demeanor. I think council's fun so far, and especially tonight, being able to adjust the agenda to accommodate one of our own is really appreciated, thank you. All right, city manager remarks?
No comments, mayor and council.
City attorney remarks?
No comments, mayor.
All right, we're adjourned.